The problem with China, maybe with the rings, is they don't have the quality control of their ancient steels and metals. They use a lot of garbage. Which makes it really strange. Here, full of resources. We have a period of 299. We have a spectrometer. Swag there. You're true, we're watching your work. If it wasn't, not inspected, you gotta have a carbon 3.25 to 3.27. You gotta have it. You have to have your silicon 2.71, 2.72 in there. And all the other metals that go along with it. I could talk on it. Their pulling control is a lot wider than the first one. And we got some here that's a ring. It can have a high carbon. The tinsel strip. You gotta shut up.
But the customers did a revised agenda. We were able to get that correct.
Seven o'clock, like call me an order? Go call.
Barlow.
Here.
Jarvis.
Here.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Here.
Rezegi.
Here.
Stensel Barton.
Here.
Tassiva.
Here. Entertained a motion to excuse Councilmember Bowers and Brim?
Still moved.
I will second that.
Motion by Nesbit, supported by Stensel Barton, to excuse Councilmember Bowers and Councilmember Brim. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote same. Please rise for pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thank everybody for coming tonight. Uh, everybody get a chance to look at the agenda. I think this is the correct agenda. I think this is third correction, I think.
It's only the second.
Second.
Anyhow.
Single page, though.
Yeah, yeah, you know, I don't know how to act. I gotta have, I gotta keep flipping back and forth. Entertained a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
How's the move?
Support.
Motion by Barlow, supported by McJar- Jarvis.
Thank you, Jarvis.
I had to do that one last time.
Last time.
Motion by Barlow, supported by Jarvis, to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote same. Uh, in your packet, you have the minutes of your December 9th, 2024 regular meeting. Do I hear a motion? Is there any corrections or additions? If not, do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Support.
Okay, motion by McLean, supported by Jarvis, to approve the minutes of the December 9th, 2024 regular meeting minutes. Discussion? Go call.
Oh, where am I? Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Tassiva.
Yes. Also, you're presented with the minutes of the closed session meeting of November 12th, 2024, tonight. Uh, entertain a motion to approve and place on file.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Support.
Okay, motion by Stensel Barton, uh, supported by Nesbit, to approve the minutes of the November 12th, 2024 closed meeting minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, vote same. Public hearing, we have none. Public comment. This time, anybody would like to get up and go to the podium? Tell me who you are, and I'll give you three minutes. And then let me know if you're a resident.
Christina Bush, I'm not a resident. I'm Maple Grove. I wanted to give a heads up and also an invitation regarding a remembrance walk that I am pulling together in honor of Martin Luther King Jr. Day on January 20th. The timing will be 11:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m., and whoever gathers will be walking on the sidewalk around the courthouse. I encourage those who want to participate to bring signs with quotes from Dr. King and other civil rights activists. I have spoken with the Berry County Administrator's Office and with the Hastings City Chief of Police to make sure I have any necessary paperwork taken care of and have been informed since the activity is on the sidewalk and not on the lawn or building steps, that a permit is not necessary. At this time, I do not know how many participants to expect. To help estimate a head count, there will be an ad in the reminder about the walk in early January with a QR code for signing up. The ad will also be posted in local social media groups. I will get that estimated head count to the county and city officials several days before the walk. In the event that the weather does not make the activity an attractive event, we will cancel the event for that day and might look at another date. If you need contact information from me, I can leave that with the appropriate person. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to get up and address the council? Speak their piece?
Hello.
Tell us who you are, and if you're a resident, please.
My name is Ann Devroy, and I'm a resident of Hastings. And I'm here tonight to introduce myself as having applied for the Third Ward City Council seat. I've lived in Hastings all my life and in Third Ward over 45 years. I take a lot of pride in this town and everything that's being done, and I just wanna help give. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ann.
Got the timer going. Joel Livingston, Rutland Township. See if I can keep under three minutes. I don't need an introduction, maybe an explanation or two. Something on Reverend Fred Shuttlesworth. You guys should all read his, she was talking about, um, oh, what was it? Martin Luther King Jr. There's a book Reverend Fred Shuttlesworth, "A Fire That You Can't Put Out", and I would recommend you guys read it. He was blown up twice and stabbed once and amongst many other things, and his attitude about that was God's deliverance. And so, something I'd recommend you do. Also, I just wanna, I looked into the situation. I spoke with you somewhat on that, Mayor. There was a chance to have a correction for the ballot issue that happened, but that had to have been done within 48 hours of the canvassing. I'm sure that you were all on pins and needles waiting for my opinion on that. But anyway, with all else, that's it.
Thank you, Joel. Anybody else wanna get up and address the council? Okay, uh, formal recognitions and presentations. Presentation by Dave Hatfield, we've excused him for the evening. Item B, presentation of draft annual financial audit for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, by Joe Verlin of, what's that? Grabbridge and Company?
Gaybridge.
Seemed like I had a problem with that last year.
Sure, close enough.
Okay.
Good evening. I thank the council for the opportunity to be here, and I, I thank Linda in the accounting team at the city for doing a wonderful job, providing us with the information that we needed in order to be able to conduct the annual city audit. And I don't intend to cover all 80 pages or so tonight. Hopefully, that's not too upsetting to anyone. I'm gonna go through and just cover the highlights, but certainly if there are questions along the way, I'm more than happy to answer them. What matters more than anything else is the second paragraph on page one. And that's where we provide an opinion on the financial statements. So we received financial statements. We went through, we confirmed and verified numbers with the county, the state of Michigan, various financial institutions, and everything was verifiable. We wrote, "In our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the city as of June 30, 2024." And this is referred to, I would, it's a clean opinion on your financial statements. This is the gold standard. This is the highest level of an opinion that we can provide on your financial statements. The technical term, according to the AICPA, the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, is unmodified, but that is, it sounds very flattering, so I always explain it as being a clean opinion on your financial statements. It should always be the city's goal to have a clean opinion on your financials, but it certainly does mean something to earn it. We have had larger organizations with either qualified or adverse opinions on their financials because they couldn't stand behind the numbers that they provided to us. So kudos to the city and the staff for getting to this point. The next section that I take readers through starts on page six. This is the first page of management's discussion and analysis. And I would think of the MDA section as being essentially the clip note version of the entire audit. So if you wanted to read eight, nine, 10 pages and just get kind of a general understanding of the entire audit, this is the way, the place to go get that condensed information. So there's financial highlights. It has two-year comparative information, and then it's got some narrative explaining the reasons behind significant changes in your financials during the past two years. That first bullet point in the financial highlight section shows a theoretical number. Theoretically, if the city were to sell all of its assets and pay all of its liabilities, there would be $40,597,513 left over. This is on a long-term basis of accounting. So we are including in this the infrastructure, the buildings, vehicles. We're backing off your long-term liabilities, your bonds payable, retiree healthcare, pension liability, all of those things. Very long-term outlook, and obviously, the city has no intention of doing that, but what does matter is that your net position increased by $5,550,123. So that just gives a little bit of context to that, the $40,597,000. If a reader of the financial statements asks, is the city better off financially at June 30, 2024 compared to June 30, 2023? The answer is yes, by roughly $5.5 million. In the corporate world, we would call that net income. So always good to have your revenues exceeding your expenses. It just means that the city is operating at a sustainable level. Second bullet point down, now we're looking at the more traditional way of looking at your financial statements, your immediate resources compared to your immediate obligations, and the difference is your fund balance. So your governmental funds had total fund balances of $7,756,521, and your increase in fund balance was about $1,267,000 during the course of the year. And again, this is a shorter-term focus. I would think of this as being checkbook accounting, and when we see an increase in fund balance, it's another way of saying the cash into the city exceeded the cash out by about $1 million during the course of the year. And then that third bullet point, now we're focusing just on the unassigned fund balance in your general fund. General fund's the most important fund. The unassigned fund balance is the most important element of your fund balance because it's the amount that you have to cover the day-to-day cost of running the city. You can use that for wages, utilities, things of that nature. $5,141,169 was your unassigned fund balance. If we take that number and divide it by your annual general fund expenditures and transfers out, you've got about 8.15% funded. So almost 10 months' worth of reserves sitting in your unassigned fund balance. And on the average, our cities, we work with 25 cities in Michigan, they range anywhere from 50% to 75%. So not too much, not too little, very healthy unassigned fund balance as of June 30, 2024. If you turn now to page 10, just a couple of numbers that I wanted to point out here. This schedule shows your comparative assets and liabilities for the past two years. And I'm gonna focus on the last two columns. The very last column, very top row, shows that your cash and investments at June 30, 2023 were about $11.3 million, and that number improved up to about $12.3 million. So we talked about fund balances increasing by roughly $1 million. Stands to reason that your cash and investments would change by roughly the same amount, and they did. And it's always nice to know how, you know, of all the assets and liabilities, the one that matters the most, cash and investments. It's always nice to see how that's doing. Next, if you look about, seven, eight rows up from the bottom in the non-current liability section, you can see that the city's net pension liability, as reported at June 30, 2023, was about $10.3 million. That number improved to $6.8 million, roughly a $3.5 million improvement. Two reasons for that. First, there was a $2.2 million voluntary contribution made by the city during the year. That certainly helped. In addition to that, all the assets that have been set aside by the city to cover your long-term pension liability earned 11.6%. So everything that's sitting in the MERS trust did very well. 11.6% for the 12 months ended December 31st, 2023, just because MERS, of course, has a different calendar year than the city does. So there's a little bit of a gap there, but 11.6% return on investment helped drive down your net pension liability. And that's a good thing. We like seeing that number trending down. If you turn one more page to page 11, we see a similar schedule. This shows your revenues and expenses for the past two years. And just a couple of things I wanted to point out here. Again, I'll focus on those last two columns, total primary government. That's looking at all the funds of the city. Halfway down the page, you can see that your total revenues improved from $12.7 million up to about $14.8 million for the 12 months ended June 30, 2024. A couple of big reasons for that, three reasons. About $1 million of additional grant funding, including some markup funds that were recognized as revenue during the course of the year. In addition to that, roughly $200,000 of additional investment earnings that were recognized during the course of the year just because investments performed much better in fiscal '24 compared to fiscal '23. And you can see a healthy increase in your property taxes as well as taxable values continue to increase in the city. That pulls up your tax revenues. Those are really the three primary reasons for that increase in total revenues. And when I say property taxes increase, it really is just a matter of taxable values as opposed to mileage rates, no change in mileage rates. And then total expenses, four rows up from the bottom, you can see that total expenses in 2023 were roughly $11.4 million, and that number decreased to roughly $9.3 million. Again, the biggest reason for that being the overall decrease in your net pension liability driving down expenses. So just a really good sign when expenses decrease and revenues increase. You can see three rows up from the bottom. The change in net position was $5.5 million during '24 and about $1.3 million in '23. So back-to-back years with increasing net position. Very good sign with regard to your finances. If you turn now to page 21, we get into the fund financial statement section of the audit report, and this, again, is on the short-term basis of accounting, showing how much cash went into each of the city's funds compared to how much cash went out. Your general fund had an increase in fund balance of $958,000, three rows up from the bottom in that very first column. And then if you go all the way to the very last column, total governmental funds, you can see where we aggregate all of the governmental funds together, about a million-dollar increase. In other words, all the other funds of the city are essentially breaking even. The vast majority of the increase in fund balance came from your general fund here in the year. And that's what you'd expect. Special revenue funds are intended to collect revenues and disperse them back out. So all in all, good financial health across all the funds of the city. If you turn to page 25, we get a look at the statement of cash flows for your business-type activities. And really, the primary fund within your business-type activities is the water and sewer utility fund. And it's always nice to see, how are our rates set? Are they generating enough revenues to cover the day-to-day cost of running those utility funds? And you can see that the total cash received from customers during the course of the year was roughly $4.2 million, and a million of that was used to pay vendors, and about $1.8 million was used to pay the employees, leaving about $1.36 million of cash flow was generated by your operating activities in the water and sewer fund. And then if you look about, a little over halfway down the page, the net cash used by capital and related financing activities. This section of the statement of cash flows shows how much the city reinvested into your infrastructure, which is roughly $400,000 during the course of the year. And then another $610,000 was used to cover debt service payments, your bond and principal and interest payments during the course of the year. So roughly just over $1 million was used for infrastructure renewal and covering debt service payments during the course of the year. Altogether, if you look six rows up from the bottom, five rows up from the bottom, the net increase in cash and investments was roughly $585,000 in your water and sewer fund. So not only did you cover your debt service payments and paid for additional system improvements, there was about $585,000 of positive cash flow for future debt service and capital improvements. And the last couple pages I wanted to point out, if you go to page 69, we get to the required supplemental section, required supplemental information section of the audit report, and this shows the past 10 years' worth of changes in the city's net pension liability. And it looks like there's a typo, but 2023 is really the MERS year-end. So MERS, as I mentioned, has a December 31st year-end. So these numbers are all based on December 31st, 2023. About one-third of the way down this schedule in the 2023 column, you can see the total pension liability is just over $18 million. That number comes directly from MERS. They have an actuary that comes in on an annual basis, and they look at all the city's active employees who are eligible to participate in retirees, and they believe over the course of the next 30, 40, 50 years, the city is gonna pay about $18 million to cover your total pension obligation. In order to cover that obligation, if you look about two-thirds of the way down the page, you see the planned fiduciary net position. These are the assets that the city has set aside in the MERS trust, and that's about $11.3 million at December 31st, 2023. And the difference between your assets and your liabilities is your net pension liability of roughly $6.8 million. And if we take your total assets divided by your total liabilities, the city is 62.3% funded, which is a significant improvement compared to December 31st, 2022. One column to the right, you can see that the city was only 43% funded one year earlier. So that voluntary contribution put a significant dent in that long-term net pension liability. Most of our cities are funded right around 75%.
Does that reflect the grant we got also in that figure?
Yes, yeah, that's part of those voluntary contributions, and certainly is a big piece of that improvement. So Treasury expects a minimum funding percentage of 60%, so you're now above that hurdle at 62.3%. So you've cleared that minimum threshold. On the average, our cities are somewhere between 72.5% and 75% funded. So a little bit below average, but certainly a very significant step forward was made in '23. Similarly, if you look at page 71, this is the retiree healthcare liability, also referred to as OPEB, but it's the city's retiree healthcare obligation to its employees. Same thing, the total OPEB liability, this is the amount that's gonna be paid over the next 20, 30 years, $687,018, according to the June 30, 2024 actuarial valuation. And then the planned fiduciary net position, the cash that's been set aside to cover that liability, $818,695, meaning that you guys actually have more assets than liability, leading to a net OPEB asset, which is unique. Most of our, in fact, I just did an honor presentation for the city last night. They were 8% funded. You guys are 119% funded, so much better than average on the retiree healthcare side of things. Those are the highlights that I've got, but I'm certainly happy to take any further questions the council might have.
Any questions?
Nice job, nice explanation. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much.
So, uh, okay, next item. Item 9A, request from Gina McMahon, Outreach Recreation Director of YMCA of Berry County to use Fish Ad Tree Soccer Field, the Bob King Baseball Field, and a combination of Bob King Fish Ad Tree Baseball Fields for events, describes in the attachments. And they have various dates, spring, and they coordinate with other people that use these fields, so it's pretty much the same request we've always had. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve the request from...
Support.
Gina McMahon.
Okay, motion by McLean, supported by Barlow, to approve the request from Gina McMahon, Outreach Recreation Director of YMCA of Berry County to use the Fish Ad Tree Soccer Field, the Bob King Park Baseball Field, and a combination of Bob King and Fish Ad Tree Baseball Fields for events described in the attachments. Any discussion? Go call.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Tassiva.
Yes. Item B, in your, in your packet, you have a request to schedule a workshop meeting on Monday, January 27th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. to interview for the Third Ward Councilmember position. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Nesbit, supported by Rezegi. You got her Nesbit first. So the motion was made by Nesbit, supported by Rezegi, to schedule a workshop meeting on January 27th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. to interview for the Third Ward Councilmember position. Any questions?
How many people have applied, do we know?
I think we have three already.
Ooh, a crowd, is it?
Two received.
Okay, two received.
Aware of a third one, but it hasn't been received yet.
Okay. So it's a small crowd.
So we, it was in your communication from the manager, it was indicated that we had at least one person that applied that was gonna be on the pre-scheduled vacation. So we decided to change it to the, and that still keeps us within that 45-day period. Any other discussion? Go call.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stensel Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yeah.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Tassiva.
Yes. Okay, item 10, 10A, request to authorize the Hastings Public Library to install and maintain 21 signs for the storybook, walk along the Riverwalk Trail under the direction, and approve the city staff. Everybody get a chance to look at this? Do we have anybody here from the library that'd like to talk about that?
I'm happy to answer questions.
Operate up there and tell us who you are and what you're planning on doing. We all have it in our agenda, but we wanna hear you tell us.
All right, my name is Erin Quita. I'm the youth librarian at the library. This is Dave, David, sorry, I've never called you Dave before. Who is, will be the director as of January 1st. So we received funds in memory of Jane Arnold, who was a longtime educator in the Hastings School System. And the family came to us asking what options we had for an enduring... Memorial. And I, this storybook walk on the Riverwalk or somewhere in town here had been on my like long-term goals, big ideas list, and I mentioned it to them, and they loved the idea. So I started doing some research and looked at different options of building signs ourselves, different things like that. And I came to, there's basically two companies that make signs specifically for this. And this is Vacker Signs, as the image is on the screens, and they have professional signs with metal aluminum posts. They would be sunk into the ground and made permanent. And we would have Vacker panels that would support storybook pages of books that we could change out regularly. And then if we don't have enough pages, the Vacker panels would be able to be flipped over and just provide information about nature. And our goal is to get them installed along the Riverwalk for families to enjoy the stories, be outdoors, be active. And we just think this would be a lovely addition to our community.
Any questions?
Couple questions. I think it's a great idea, super worry about vandalism, but how, how do they get these books? Are, is there a cable that you run to get the books on each of these? Or is it via what?
So the, the storybook pages, we would purchase books, disassemble them. They would, the pages would be laminated, and then the signs actually can come apart to insert them within the sign.
So it's, it's not electronic, though?
No.
It's your pages, laminated pages?
Yes, physical book pages.
Okay. Great idea. Looks great.
How many would you have along the trail?
So we would have one on library property, kind of showing people where to go to get to it, and then there would be 20 along the trail.
Okay, so this, the, I'm just clarifying.
Yeah.
So, uh... The family would read the story as they walk. So the first part of the story would be, let's say, at the library, and then it would progress from there.
Yes.
So it encouraged them to go farther, to continue to read the story.
Yes.
Okay.
And this is on the nature walk? In the nature walk?
Riverwalk.
Yeah, the Riverwalk. Yeah, the river walk. Don't get me wrong, I love reading, I love writing, I love all this, but on the River Walk, I want nature. I don't like this.
Well, the whole reason for the River Walk is to, you know, we're trying to be a more of a walkable biking community, and that's kind of what they do, you know?
And then people are going to stop and stand and read this while others are, I, don't get me wrong, I love the library, I really, really, really do. I don't like this on my River Walk.
Well, it's about what your community likes.
And I understand that.
And your constituents like it.
I understand that.
Okay, okay. Any other questions? Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Support. Okay, motion by McLean, supported by Rezegi, to authorize the Hastings Public Library to install and maintain 21 signs for the storybook walk along the River Walk, River Walk Trail under direction of, and approval of city staff. Any further questions, comments? Roll call.
Stencil Barton.
No.
Barlow.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Okay, the next item, we have a request to approve the purchase of a replacement rotary broom from Greenmark Equipment for the sidewalk sweeper for a cost of $500. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Support.
Okay, motion by Rezegi, supported by McLean, to approve the request to purchase a replacement rotary broom from Greenmark Equipment for the sidewalk sweeper for the cost of $500. Discussion?
The malfunctioning broom is causing a lot of vibration on the tractor and noise, and we can't fix that?
No, the drive shaft is broken on it, a couple of them, so by, well, one problem is known, the other problem is unknown, and by the time we identify and fix it, we could buy a new broom.
Maybe I misread something.
It's just the broom we're after, not the tractor.
Correct.
Oh, I read something, I thought it said something about a tractor involved.
If we could get a tractor and broom for this price.
That was a little bit choppy. Not a good reader. It's just the broom that's being replaced.
Correct.
Okay.
And then your communication, it states that this broom basically is used specifically in the downtown area, downtown sidewalks and the River Walk. So the thought is to apply to the DDA when they meet next month to be reimbursed to the city for this.
Yeah, I read that, and I was going to ask the question, has anyone reached out to the DDA to get an idea that they know we're buying it and we're going to look to them to grift? I mean, get money back or anything like that?
I don't know if we have yet. They didn't have a December meeting. We just didn't want to wait until January to bring it to them and then order it, and then we wouldn't get it till February, March, if winter's over.
Halfway through the winter.
And so we wanted to just go ahead and move forward with it because it is a needed item. I don't think that they'll have any problem with approving the purchase. It's very important to the DDA, it's one of their priorities, a snow removal, it comes up annually at their meetings, and they budget for snow removal on an annual basis as well. So I believe that they'll identify this as a need, and I don't foresee any issues with having it approved.
Okay, I believe you.
Any further comments? Okay, we have motion by Rezegi, supported by McLean, to approve the purchase of a replacement rotary broom from Greenmark Equipment for the sidewalk sweeper for the cost of $500. There's no further comments, roll call.
Barlow.
Yes.
Jarvis.
No.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stencil Barton.
No.
Tassava.
Yes. Okay, item C, request to approve cost of repairs for Murray's Asphalt in the amount of $5,900. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion, sir.
Support.
Motion by Barlow, supported by Rezegi, to approve cost of repairs by Murray Asphalt in the amount of $5,900. This is various patches, one in the 100 block of Mill Street, one in the 100 block of East State Road. So do I hear a motion? Or, yeah, we do have a motion. So we have a motion by Barlow, supported by Rezegi, to approve. Any discussion? No discussion, roll call.
Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stencil Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Also on your packet, item D, we have a request to approve Van Dyken Mechanical Incorporated proposal to furnish and install new humidifier in the City Hall second floor for the cost of $6,655. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Motion by Rezegi, do I hear support?
Support.
Supported by Barlow, to approve the request from Van Dyken Mechanical to, for the proposal to furnish and install a new humidifier in the City Hall second floor for the cost of 65, $6,655. Discussion?
Aren't we redoing upstairs, police department, does this fall into that?
This is for the entirety of this floor.
Has nothing to do with...
No, it's not related to that.
The humidifier that's located in the closet out here, the issue we're having with it right now is runs when it wants to. It runs too long, so what's happening is, there's so much condensation, condensation up here, it's leaking into the floor. So they've been here to repair it numerous times, it can't be repaired anymore.
Is that a humidifier or a dehumidifier?
Yeah, it's a humidifier, the opposite.
Yeah, humidifier.
Gotcha, just making sure. Don't be mad at me.
Oh, I'm not mad.
Humidifier is going to put moisture in.
I wonder if there was a water spot last meeting on the hallway floor.
Yeah, it's been, it's...
It's a slow leak.
And what is acting up is, it's a real high pitch whistle. So if you're ever up here during a meeting and you hear that noise, you got a problem with the...
So is it common for municipal buildings to have a humidifier?
I think it has to do with our air handler system. Travis is probably more knowledgeable about how it works than I am.
It's common for almost all buildings to have humidifiers in the wintertime when you're heating, the air gets really dry, so you have to include moisture.
I know, my house is dry, but I don't have a humidifier.
A bunch of dried up plants.
All that hot air?
I didn't say that.
Yeah, you did, on record. Thank you.
The agenda says 6,655, but the price for scope of work outlined above is $8200. Why is there a difference? I'm on page something, something.
You're on item 10D is what you're on.
That was another contractor.
Oh, that's, oh, I, okay, I haven't got the entire screen. Gotcha.
The people, the people that gave us the low bid is Van Dyken Mechanical for $6,655. Background information, the existing humidifier in the works is over 10 years old, some parts are no longer available. The only option is to remove the broken humidifier and replace it with a new coral humidifier. Allied Mechanical also provided a proposal of $8,200.
That's, I apologize, I skipped down one page, I didn't mean to.
I just, John said something about a puddle of water and a humidifier would have nothing to do with a puddle of water.
Well, there's, yeah, it does, because there's a tank inside the humidifier that holds the water, that turns it into steam, basically. So that underneath, it no longer holds water, so it just drips, drips down. The bottle's broke.
It doesn't work well, right?
Right, it doesn't work at all.
It's nothing to do with moisture on the windows, though.
Uh, no, well, it did, it did leak, I think, some steam, so that it was, inside the closet, there was dripping on the ceiling.
So it gave you too much humidity.
Yeah, I guess so.
I mean, I can understand it. Humidifier makes your, while your building's warmer, because it's got humidity in, of course, and, you know, it's just like your house, and then you, you know, walk on the floor and you get sparks all over, and that's no fun either, so, you know, I think a humidifier is good in a building, so I can understand that. But I was just confused on D, humidifier. Okay.
Got her. Okay, any other questions or comments?
I have a comment, I think we're awful lucky that it didn't create more damage than it did. You know, like I say, the water spot, when I seen it, was halfway up in the hallway. It could have easily leaked downstairs into the ceiling down there and caused even more problems, so.
Okay, so we have a motion by Rezegi, supported by Barlow, to approve Van Dyken Mechanical Incorporated proposal to furnish and install a new humidifier in City Hall second floor for the cost of $6,655. Any further discussion? Roll call.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stencil Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Okay, next item up, we have a request to approve High Point Tree Services LLC bid for the 2025 tree trimming, removal, and stump grinding contract for a cost of $27,000. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by McLean, supported by Nesbit, to approve High Point Tree Services bid for 2025 tree trimming, removal, and stump grinding contract for a cost of $27,000. Any questions?
Do we know what the bid was last year?
Doesn't matter, because we're not taking as many trees down.
That's what I thought. Because last year, if I remember right, it was near $100,000 or something.
Well, I looked it up, it was $31,000 last year's bid. Yep.
I think too, a couple years ago...
Right, it was a couple years ago that we got hit with a big bill.
Well, but also, we had bids at high. There's a bid on this one for $114,000.
Right.
That just shows you what's out there.
Right.
These people have been doing our work for a couple years. One year, we had a crew come in here, and they come in with two or three crews, and they made a mess of the whole city.
Yep, I remember that.
So then we got a little more selective, we wanted to make sure somebody local did it, and luckily, we had somebody locally bid on it, which was a fair price, and they got the bid. Well, they did excellent work last year, and then they, they're a little bitter again this year, so, you know, and they worked great with our crew, you know? If we have a snowstorm or whatever, and the guy's got to go out and work plowing snow or those other things we don't talk about, you know, they, this tree trimming company works with them, so, you know, that's great when, if you're over there in that department. But we have, we have a motion by McLean, supported by Nesbit, to approve High Point Tree Services bid, 2025 tree trimming, removal, and stump grinding contract for $27,000. Any other comments? Roll call.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stencil Barton.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Staff presentations and policy discussions, we have none. City manager report.
Well, I'd like to congratulate you, Mr. Mayor, on being able to foresee the future because the agenda does need to change for a third time. I'd like to request that the amended agenda reflects item 10F to receive in place on file the audit report for fiscal year ending June 30, 2024, if someone would be willing to make the motion to amend the agenda.
We've already passed 10F. We've already passed it.
We went to E.
Well, we're at 12 now.
But then we have to have a motion on it.
Would you not want to amend the agenda to accept the audit report?
Entertained a motion to agenda, the agenda to include the audit.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Barlow, supported by McLean, this is the last meeting, and you want to get out of here in a hurry, I'm trying to make it last. We have a motion by Barlow, supported by McLean, to amend the agenda to include the audit. Approval of the audit, right?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion to add that to the agenda, so let's vote on that first. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, we want to approve the draft.
To receive in place on file the audit report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024, please.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Motion by Nesbit, Nesbit.
We all look alike.
Stencil Barton, supported by Rezegi, to approve, receive in place on file the audit report. That was out.
Thanks.
Now, if this was written down, it'd be easier for me.
For all of us.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call.
Oh, man.
Well, you're making a hurry on me.
I think it's funny.
You're just sitting back, aren't you?
Last meeting of the year, we gotta have a...
Barlow.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Stencil Barton.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Back to city manager report.
Thank you. So in your packet, and under reports and communications, you have a copy of the CIP and budget calendar for the upcoming fiscal year. Let me know if you have any questions about either of those planning processes. I also wanted to note that because we've shifted when the workshop will be to do interviews for the new council member for the third ward, the goal session will be on the first meeting in February rather than the last meeting in January, but that should still work fine for our timeline. Also wanted to make sure that you were aware that we had entered into a purchase agreement with a developer to construct single-family homes at the property we own at Orchard and Hayes. As, well, I don't know if it's as a result, or following the phase one environmental assessment, they have decided that they don't want to move forward with the property. We spoke with SME who did the phase one, and just to learn more about the information that was contained within the report. They did not identify anything on the site itself that was concerning, but because the adjacent industrial property does have some volatile compounds in the soil, they recommend that a phase two assessment be done on the Orchard and Hayes property to ensure that nothing's trailed over. They also suggest reviewing an actual site plan to know where buildings are going to be in conjunction with that phase two assessment, so they can make a better determination about if there are any effects and what could be done to mitigate it. So the site is not polluted, the site does not have any environmental concerns that we're aware of, but because the adjacent property does more, more investigation is warranted prior to adding buildings to that site. So Dan and I will kind of regroup and have a suggestion about how to move forward with marketing this property in January. So other than that, unless there are questions, that is my report.
I got one question about that property. Did the developers not identify where they wanted to build, so SME just went up there and started poking holes all over the place, or what?
Well, they didn't do a phase two, so if they had, that information would have been important, but the developer pulled their interest from the site.
Well, there'd be somebody else out there.
Sure.
Just one additional comment. That environmental report was done with the Berry County's brownfield redevelopment assessment grant funds, so the brownfield redevelopment authority at the county level, once there could be another potential interested party, would then be able to move forward, likely with the committee and the board, to gain approval for a phase two assessment. to, um, get, gain approval for a phase two assessment. So, um, it's not like this, that work is going to go to waste, it's something that's going to be there for someone else who may be, uh, have potential interest in, in the property.
The city can't just request a, a second one?
It's only good for a certain amount of time.
So you gotta have somebody interested.
Right, and it protects the new buyer.
And for the grant to be, um, available, there has to be, uh, buy any purchase agreement on the property. Since there wasn't at the time the assessment started, um, phase one was completed. To, to escalate to a phase two, now that we don't have a purchase agreement pending, uh, we'd have to proceed another purchase agreement from another interested party, engage the brownfield redevelopment authorities at county level for approval, and then work with SME on that, and a potential developer.
But, but, we had two people interested, two developers interested in property. Have we reached out to the other developer?
That'll be the recommendation, uh, that Sarah and I will bring back to council next week, next, uh, month, probably for January the fifteenth meeting, regarding what our recommendation is to follow our asset disposition policy notice appropriately and move forward. As Sarah mentioned, we'll have a recommendation for council change.
Well, I just want to get it out there that, uh, this property's available for anybody who wants to develop it, you know. Okay, thanks. That it?
Yep.
Can't believe it, done already. Also in your packet, uh, Chief Boulder's monthly reports in there, and, uh, I'm sure he's going to get up and tell us, give us a few, a few highlights.
Careful not to break out.
I love it, I love it. Um, so, one thing I really wanted to, uh, point out is, um, listening to, uh, the audit report, man, my CIP is going to be great. Some of you won't be able to hear it, or you'll hear it, but you won't be able to vote on it. Yeah, I have, I have big plans, so, get ready.
Mr. Stensel Barton?
I heard that. Uh, anyway, uh, just joking around a little bit, I like to have fun, as you guys all know. Um, in, in my report, obviously, I don't like to touch everything on the report, but something that's important that I do want to mention to keep things, um, so it's being talked about, um, is, uh, we're going to be changing our office hours come January sixth. Obviously, as I stated in there, there's, there's reasons behind that in regards to, um, just the, the requirements of the office staff and things that are, are, are put on them every day. Um, it's, it's come to the point to where, um, things carry over the shift and into the next shift, so we need to kind of limit, uh, um, you know, what's happening there and to, uh, basically manage our budget, right? Um, so, um, you know, obviously, uh, I work, uh, you know, typically longer hours than, than what, uh, is necessary, I guess, so to speak, but, uh, probably, um, not as many now that I have a driver, but, uh, e- either way, uh, people will still have access to myself, the deputy chief, sergeants, uh, it would, it won't matter, it'd just, it'll just be maybe, you know, by us, uh, going down, letting them in the door, because, um, come the sixth, we're, you know, the doors will shut at, uh, four-thirty PM, the, and they won't open till eight-thirty. Um, as of now, they open at eight AM and close at five. Um, so I don't want people to think that, uh, their access to us has been cut short, uh, basically by an hour each day. Um, that's not the case. Um, I do need to allow my staff time to process what, uh, they need to process in the day, uh, that comes. We, we've already limited certain things, gun permits, uh, things that take quite a bit longer, um, and quite possibly longer than a half hour, uh, to the end of the day, so those have already been limited, and that's been that way for quite some time. So, um, uh, we're, we're going to, uh, work on some, uh, posting and, uh, you know, some, in, uh, to information in regards, so people know, um, and attempt to get it out as much as possible. So, uh, but either way, um, that's going to happen on the sixth, so, um, I just wanted to also point out, um, you know, the Christmas parade, um, obviously, uh, it was actually one of the most attended ones that I've seen since I've been here. Um, as we kind of already ta, talked about it, um, but, uh, HPD and, uh, DPS and the fire department, uh, all work together. Uh, it, it was, it was an awesome event, uh, you know, and, uh, no lost kids and, uh, no injuries, and that's always a bonus for me. Uh, so, um, obviously, the next event is, uh, the ball drop, um, and hopefully, the next time you guys see me, um, I'll be a new man. I won't have this extra appendage on, um, so I'm, I'm confident that that's going to take place.
You've been saying that for two months.
I, yeah, I know, I know, so.
Oh, thank you.
Um, but anyway, um, on behalf of, uh, the Hastings Police Department, I wish everybody here and listening out in, uh, the, the, uh, community, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and, um, you know, uh, we're going to have some extra patrols out, so, uh, make, make wise choices, please.
To you as well. Any questions to Dale, while he's up there? You know, I'm really looking forward to the end of the month, Dale. You know, you were always talking about getting dangerous drivers off the road.
Yeah.
You'll be driving again. Thank you.
I heard a set of voicemails to walk you around, though.
Exactly.
Okay, in your packet, you have the clerk treasurer's report. Anything to add, Linda?
I do not.
Also in your packet, you have the committee development director King's monthly report. Anything to add, Dan?
Uh, the only thing I'll add is, uh, my thank you to councilmember Bowers and councilmember Jarvis for their years of service, since I've been with the city the last eight years. Uh, also want to thank them because, uh, with the Bowers family, I've known them going on about sixty years, so, just a few days, and Al, Pam, Jarvis, uh, not quite that long, but a considerable period of time, so, uh, my congratulations.
I'm a lot younger than Don.
If you have any other questions.
Any questions? Okay, thanks, Dan. Also in your packet, you have Assessor Rashid's monthly report, and as always, she's not here, but if you ever want to go down and talk to her about assessing, she'd be glad to take you under her wing and explain everything she does to you. She's a real knowledgeable person, I think she's doing a great job for the city. Uh, item thirteen, reports and communications. Item A, capital improvement plan and budget calendar, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Uh, item B, twenty twenty-five, observed city holidays. Item C, twenty twenty-five payroll calendar. Item D, twenty twenty-five airport board schedule. I entertain a motion to accept those items and place them on file.
I will, uh, make that motion.
Support. Motion by Stensel Barton, supported by Jarvis. Yeah, right now, Mick Jarvis.
One last time.
Okay, motion by, uh, Stensel Barton, supported by Jarvis, to, uh, accept and place on files, item A through D. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same. Public comment. Anybody else want to get up and talk again?
Joel Edison, Rattler Township. I meant to say this earlier, but excellent pick at the city airport, or city and county airport manager. Uh, the airports become alive on social media. I've talked to kids that have been there that just absolutely love it, and, you know, I've driven past that airport for the fourteen, fifteen, something like that years that my wife and I have been married, going to her parents and back, and it was just a piece of property, and it's kind of coming alive now, so, anyway, thanks.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? Okay, mayor and council comment. Uh, we have three people that won't be attending meetings anymore after tonight, Peggy, Don, and Al. Uh, I got an email, I, I think it was from Lois, but, uh, she wanted me to read this. Uh, this is from Don. Uh, please read the council. "It has been an honor to serve the city over the years, not sure how many." I think, I think he's been at it, uh, maybe twenty-five, twenty-six years, somewhere in there. "So sorry I cannot be with you tonight. I am at Mary Freebed, trying to get stronger to complete my valve replacement. Lois and I wish you all the best, and I will be watching you," is what he said, and I'll bet you he will be. "Sincerely, Don." And, uh, I said this the last time, let's all keep them in our, uh, thoughts and prayers, uh, you know, uh, it's, it's sad when somebody, you can't see them, uh, you know, if you're involved in committees or boards, uh, for the last time, but, uh, I, I, I'm looking forward to seeing Don again, and I, I think with all our prayers, that'll happen. But, uh, Peggy, uh, we, we had a reception for her last week, retirement reception, she was well attended, uh, you know, uh, I think I gave her a twenty-five year award last year, but, uh, like most, a, a lot of city employees, you know, we see them every day, and we kind of take it for granted, she did an excellent job at the library, and, uh, I told her that, uh, you know, what this library is right now is a great testament to her and, uh, some of the others that came before, but. And Al Jarvis, my buddy Al Jarvis, I've sat here, I told Al earlier, he used to sit on this side, then he moved over here, so I've had him coming in one ear and out the other. But he's, uh, I, I have always appreciated, uh, your opinion on things.
Thank you.
You know, sometimes we had discussions, you know, and we talked about the sidewalks to nowhere, and, but, uh, I, I really appreciate, uh, and he told me tonight that he's been around for twelve years.
Twelve years, two months.
Okay, and I, and I appreciate every, every minute of that, so, uh, I will say goodnight, but I won't say goodbye.
Okay.
And I, I wish you and your, and Pam a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Merry Christmas. Can I be next?
Sure.
Okay, well, usually I don't show up the last meeting I'm on any boards, because, uh, people say things that they probably really don't mean, you know, because they say nice things about it. Thank you, Dan, I appreciate it. Uh, I've had a lot of people make comments that I appreciate, and, um, it was kind of funny, the audit, uh, tonight, uh, I think it was my, either my first or second audit I was through, uh, we had this problem with the pension being underfunded, and I kept asking the person, you know, who was in charge, uh, what is it, we, you know, we're way underfunded on our pension, and they said, "Don't worry about it, go away, don't worry, go, go away." Well, we heard that for many years, and then the last four years of my term, uh, it finally came to a head, and we did something about the pension. Uh, it looks like it's improving, I thought it would be a little more than sixty-two percent, but that's a lot better than where it was at. And we made a tough decision on the retirees' healthcare, to try to, I guess, save the pension, we had to fund it more, so that's something that I'm kind of proud of, that we got that completed. So, I think the city's in good hands, so, uh, after twelve and, twelve years and two months, it is time to move on, and, uh, been a pleasure working with everybody, and, uh, Merry Christmas, so, thank you.
Jackie?
Oh, how do I get rid of this apple thing?
Oh, I would be happy to take that for you.
Okay, because I even have the passwords and all that good stuff, I'll give it to you before you go.
Excellent, thank you.
Or whoever goes.
Jackie, any comments?
Al, I'll miss sitting next to you.
Well, thank you.
You, you, um, have been a great mentor. And Merry Christmas.
And Merry Christmas to everyone, Al, and Happy New Year, and I look forward to seeing everybody downtown on New York City.
I'll be there.
Are you dressing up? Like in some corny costume?
I'll have a winter coat on.
We'll be cold.
Irwin?
Go ahead, oh, no.
I forgot to mention, Don, thank you, you know, he was, you know, half of the time I was here, it was unbelievable, he's been around that long, twenty-five years.
Well, I, that's just an estimate, uh, you know, I, somebody asked me today, how long I've been retired, nineteen years. He was a councilmember before I retired.
Really?
So I'm guessing at least twenty-five years.
Oh, wow, that's awesome, so, and hopefully he comes along, Don.
Yeah.
Well, I just want to say I've enjoyed, um, the time that I've been on the council, and, uh, Al, thank you so much. And again, I would say that for Don, he, uh, Don and Lois have been, uh, instrumental in a lot of things in the city of Hastings, and I think they've been, uh, very good assets for us, and just want to say Merry Christmas.
John?
I would like to thank Mr. McNugget for all the advice that you have given me over the years, and you've been a great mentor, and I'm going to be sorry to see you go, but I'm not going to forget you, and if I need some extra advi, advice, I know where to find you.
Well, I might show up to a meeting or so.
Good, good. And I, of course, Don, I don't want to forget him, and, and Peggy, uh, I want to thank all of them, and ha, uh, wish all of you a Happy Christmas and Happy New Year, hope to see you at the ball drop.
Thank you.
Terry?
Everybody's said it much better than I can. One of the new guy, you, Al's taught me nothing.
That's what I wanted to hear, and thank you. That's why I don't show up. Nobody's honest.
The mayor badmouthed me. John talks smack about me at breakfast, I don't know what to say. I've enjoyed the six months I've been on here so far, I look forward to it next year, uh, the classes, uh, the mayor sent me to. Um, Merry Christmas to everyone, a good New Year, safe New Year, safe New Year to you, to you, staff, you.
I forgot your name for a moment, I'm sorry. I'm all broken up.
I would like to wish everybody a Happy Christmas and, uh, Happy New Year also, stay safe out there. I have enjoyed working with Al and getting to know you better. I did, uh, work at McDonald's at one time, and, uh, Don also, I wish him well. Other than that, everybody's said everything else.
Thank you. Anything else come for council? Entertained a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, you do it.
You made it the last time.
Yes, you do it.
Make a motion, then we adjourn.
I'll support.
Thank you.
Motion by Jarvis, supported by McLean, that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, hold the same. Thanks for coming.
Thanks for having us. Joel.
Glad we got you, we had a fire coming right now.
What was the, what did you?